Open the meeting for April 10th, 2018. Roll call.
Ms. Snell.
Here.
Ms. Metoyer.
Here.
Ms. Flure.
Here.
Mr. Davenport.
Here.
Ms. Franco.
Here.
Ms. Black.
Ms. Yelsey.
Here.
Dr. Navarro.
Here.
Okay, so there are no public comments?
No.
Okay, so with that, we will adjourn to closed session. Call the meeting to order, April 10th, 2018. And I have a readout from closed session. A report, oh, sorry. In closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the resignation agreement and general release for number 201802HR. The roll call vote was as follows: seven ayes and no. Did I do that? Okay, so we are going to start with opening ceremonies, a moment of reflection, and pledge of allegiance to be Alexandra. You like Alex, huh?
Yeah.
Alex.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone that's here. I thought I saw Kitty Cat back there. Oh. Nice hat, nice hat. Okay, so next is adoption of agenda.
Move adoption.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. And then the adoption of minutes for March 27th, 2018, and April 3rd, 2018.
Move adoption.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Then next, we have introduction of new staff. And who's doing that?
Me.
Oh.
That's me, that's me.
It doesn't say Sarah.
Well, it is Sarah.
It's you.
It is, yes. So I'd like to invite Officer Rank to come up, and I'll introduce him as he's kind of walking up. So Officer Rank has been with the Costa Mesa Police Department for two and a half years. And prior to his service as Costa Mesa, he served in the US Army in both Afghanistan and Guantanamo Bay, Cuba, so we thank you for your service there as well. And he's already been well received at the schools in the Estancia community, visiting several elementary schools already, and participating in flag deck ceremonies. And I heard a story that he's also made it a point to show some of the football players the proper way to bench.
Oh.
I didn't know that got out.
So, yeah, see, all the stories. So we're very excited and happy to have Officer Rank with us, and we're thankful that the Costa Mesa PD was able to make this happen. So welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you guys for having me. Thank you, guys. If you guys don't have any questions, I'm real happy to be here. I love Estancia, and I love this family. It's been really nice.
It was, it was nice. I went to coffee with the principal, and you were there, and you talked about how much you are enjoying working with the kids, and that's really good to hear.
Yep.
Because we want an officer that can connect with youth, so it's great. We welcome you.
He's definitely making up for some of the lost time when, you know, our previously assigned SRO was unable to, you know, participate. So I know he's definitely kind of jumping in and really working with the school sites on safety. We did a safety training with Officer, with our SROs yesterday, with all of our K-12 principals, and he was there, and just so other people can make sure he put names and faces together. So we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, thank you guys.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
You guys have a good day.
Okay, next is student board member reports, and we'll start with Alex.
Good evening, President Snell, four trustees, Dr. Navarro, members of the cabinet, and distinguished guests. I am Alex Leon from Ridley College High School, and we are happy to be back for being absent from the last board meeting, but we were on spring break, so unfortunately, we couldn't attend. Last Friday, we had 14 students go along with our teacher, Mr. Bowie, who's our chem and, oh my god, chem and what other sign?
Biology?
Not biology, physics. There we go. That's how long I need math. I haven't been in science in a while. Mr. Bowie joined them and joined Estancia High School too for the first time in participating in the UCI Camp Med. I heard from a bunch of our students that it was a lot of fun, and yesterday, no, yeah, yesterday, a bunch of our students came wearing hot pink suits for showing that they were first generation, and it was really awesome seeing that. And they have a bunch of stories to tell us, but they won't because it's a secret for whoever's doing Camp Med next year.
Ooh.
Last Saturday, seven of our students also took, also volunteered at the Orange Coast College Children's Center cleanup, an effort to enhance the facility and grounds for the services and children locally in Costa Mesa. And our sophomore, we had a sophomore and a freshman are credited for organizing the whole event, so it was through our club, key club and rotary, and I heard it was a lot of fun, too. This coming Saturday, our PTSA is hosting the first annual Family Skate Night from 6:00 to 8:30 at the Fountain Valley Skate Center for our students and families. So we're looking forward for that this Saturday. I'm going to be there, so hope to maybe see you guys there. Next Wednesday, we also have our Raising Canes fundraiser from 4:00 to 9:30, and just mentioned ECHS, and we'll get 15% back. And lastly, next week is Battle of the Classes for Us, and Friday, we will be holding our last house competition of the school year, which is dodgeball, and the winning house gets to play the ECH staff, so we'll see how that goes. Thank you.
Thank you. And what a great idea to have Skate Night. I mean, we had it in elementary, but how fun to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, in high school. Yeah, great, thank you. Andrea.
Hello, good evening. I'm Andrea from Estancia. So we had our Eagle Night last Thursday, so we had almost over like 100 freshmen come out, so that was, that was really good. We were, I guess you can say we weren't really expecting a lot, but over 100, perfect. So starting our, we're starting our new like ASB interviews tomorrow morning from 7:50 to 3 o'clock PM. This Thursday, we are having a peer court session from 3:15 to 5:15 at our school, so students are able to come in our community service hours by helping out, which that should be exciting. And the third quarter is this Friday, and right when we come back from spring break, we will be having our spring assembly this Thursday, or that, sorry, that Thursday. And, oh, and last thing, this Thursday, we're having a few seniors be going out to UCI for a hamlet trial at 4:30, so that should be exciting.
Thank you.
Wow.
Erin.
Hello, I'm Erin Nguyen from Mesa, or Costa Mesa High School, and with a few academic updates, we have our Spring Spotlight, our version of open house, this Thursday from 6:00 PM through 8:00 PM. It is going to be outdoors in the middle school enclave. We have our ACE, or our Academy of Creative Expression, also known as ACE, one of our signature academies, will be doing some live performances, and Project Lethaway will be featuring their solar boats. Each of our academic, as well as athletic and activities, will be represented, and TK Burger will be there for dinner, so if you're free on Thursday night, just pop on by. We'd love to see you. With an athletic update, our baseball team just won Battle of the Bell last Friday afternoon for the first time in nine years, so really, really proud of them. And a couple of our upcoming events are the Middle School Musical, the Music Man Junior is happening on April 20th and 21st, and April 27th, 28th, and 29th. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations on Battle of the Bell. That's great. Max.
Thank you. I can't see.
Oh, yeah, it was hidden.
Yeah, I should know.
Good evening, everyone. So academically, where all the seniors are taking the cast testing, don't actually know what that stands for, but I know. Also, all of our spring sports are in full swing. We have baseball, tennis match, and track meet were today at home. I don't know how they played, but I know they were happening. Also, we had a rally last Friday, and we had Clash of the Classes theme, so all of our classes competed, and that was throughout the whole week. Seniors won barely, but they won. And it was probably one of the most spirited events I think I've seen through all six years at CDM, so ASP is really excited about that and they'll be continuing that for the following years. And also, all of us are ready for spring break this coming week and for the fourth quarter, and also preparing for AP testing with many of our AP teachers giving after-school classes and help from like 3:00 to 5:00 PM. And then finally, our robotics team, which is, I mean, not always recognized, but at our school, but they're actually doing really well. I believe they won regional or state, and they're continuing to nationals, I believe, in Houston over spring break, so they're going to go out there and compete. We're excited.
Wow. Congratulations. That's great. Jalen. Jalen.
You got it right. It's rare. Hi, I'm Jalen. I'm from Newport Harbor. So most recently, last week, we had our ASB elections, which was bittersweet because I've ran every year, and obviously, I couldn't run, but yesterday, we had our welcome aboard event for incoming freshmen, and so they got to look at clubs and sports on campus and see what they're going to be doing for the next four years. And then today, they walked over to campus, just down the street, and we gave them tours, and they had lots of questions, so that was exciting. And tomorrow, we have our academic rally to recognize everybody for their academic achievements this year. Our boys volleyball team won Battle of the Bay, which brought a lot of school spirit this week. Our Bridges Club hosted a speed friendship at lunch. It's like speed dating, but with friends. And we had our student versus staff basketball game last week. We also had an ASB hosted Easter egg hunt, so there was candy and eggs that had positive messages in them with candy. And then we also got our new softball school scoreboard installed this week.
Great, yeah.
So that is all.
Great, thank you. Van.
Good evening, Mrs. Snell and the board. I'm Van Fine, representing Back Bay, Montevista. As of today, 1,888 articles have been read at Back Bay in various classes, as all of our teachers are using New Zella across the entire campus to promote improved reading ability. Mr. Jane has started teaching a yoga and mindfulness class this semester with support from the Newport Exchange Club, and our students love it. Mr. Jane would like to invite the board members to visit any Tuesday from 8:30 to 10:30. This week is our Staff versus Student Olympics. So far, the teachers have scored victories in Monday's balloon toss and today's three-on-three basketball matches. Thursday features pie eating, and Friday, we conclude with dodgeball. Our Monday guest speaker series has been very successful and has featured the carpenters' union, electric union, and a variety of other local professionals willing to share their expertise and journey with our students. If any board members would like to attend, our guest speaker series is every Monday from 9:30 to 10:30. Our senior class will be attending an OCC Career Expo Friday that will feature specific tours and introductions to 22 various career paths OCC offers. Finally, this one's really cool, we recently had a donation from the Assistance League of Newport Beach that features their closet program that will constantly be replenished as needed. Al's Closet is a resource for students to acquire new clothes and shoes when they need them. The closet features Vans, Hurley, Volcom, and other top brands students love. This will be on campus and open to all students.
Wow, that is great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good report.
Thank you.
Moving on to Mrs. Waldo, PTA, Harbor Council PTA President.
Thank you. Good evening, President Snell, board members, Dr. Navarro, cabinet, and guests. I am the current president of Harbor Council. However, I'd like to introduce to you the president-elect of Harbor Council, Julie Link.
Julie.
And she will be taking over in the fall.
Wonderful.
Harbor Council is really happy to announce that our membership is now up 8.4% over all of last year, and we're going for 10% by the end of June. We are also going to be doing another membership challenge in the fall, like we did this year with some different parameters, but it really did well for us, and we're hoping next year it will do the same. One of the things that we are approaching our PTA presidents with is to use social media in bringing in people and in being able to better communicate with their community. One of the things that we're encouraging is Nextdoor, the Nextdoor Neighbor app that so many people now participate in, and it's a way for them to be able to reach the incoming kindergarten families that don't have too much communication ahead of time, and be able to advertise to them when their Kinder events are, their Kinder welcome, their roundups, et cetera. At our last Harbor Council meeting, we did have a presentation by Principal Gabe Del Rio from Adams. He came and talked to us about the coding program and also the School Smarts program, which was very well received. We see the School Smarts program as a, as a way to better educate parents that have not been involved in the schools, don't really understand them or the way that things work, including how to, you know, get involved as a volunteer, and just what's going on, because a lot of people come in and they don't know if they're not currently involved. So we're really excited about the School Smarts program, and I know that it's going to be used more again next year. Our honorary service awards luncheon is May 7th at the Avenue of the Arts Hotel again, and please RSVP by April 20th. And we're excited to have our convention this year. Our state convention is going to be in Ontario so that we can just go out for the day, and it's a lot easier, and we're hoping to have better participation. It's going to be April 27th through 29th. We're going to do something a little different with our June meeting this year for Harbor Council. Traditionally, we have had the outgoing president of each PTA, as well as the incoming president of each PTA, attend that June meeting. But this year, we're also going to invite a couple of their executive board members so that they might get an incoming EVP or a membership chairman or someone else with them, so that we can expand the interest with Harbor Council, and even though they may not be the president, they know that we are there to help them and that they get them with better involvement. So we're going to have it here in the boardroom and do things a little bit differently. We're going to have a hot breakfast item to entice them, and we're going to also have a membership seminar during the meeting to help them plan for their membership events that they're going to have in the fall. So we're really excited about that. So we've been busy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so next we have the report, Dr. Jokum.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to invite Dr. DeAgostino up to give a little introduction, and then we have another speaker.
Yes, thank you. President Snell, Vice President Metoyer, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, and cabinet and guests, thank you so much. Tonight, on the agenda, you'll be approving the expansion of the Second Step curriculum that's currently being used in some of our elementary schools currently for social-emotional learning. And we know very well that you like to hear it from people in the field, so I've asked Yvette Perez, who is a school psychologist currently serving at Sonora and at Paul Arino Elementary. She's been in the business with us for 13 years, and I'm going to have her speak to why Second Step is something we're using in the district. So Yvette, if you could come on up, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Snell, Vice President Metoyer, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, members of the cabinet, and distinguished guests. When I was asked to come speak about Second Step today, I was very excited. Social-emotional learning is something that I'm very passionate about, and I think that the awareness of how important social-emotional learning is in the academic setting has, you know, grown over the last few years. So I've been fortunate enough to be able to use, utilize a different curriculum to be able to expose students to these skills they need to learn, and Second Step being one of them, and it's actually the primary one that I utilize. I implement it currently at both of my school sites, which are Paul Arino at Sonora. And I asked my social work intern, Emily Galvezan is here today as well because she's an important member of the implementation process at Sonora. So Second Step really, it kind of teaches students foundational learning skills for social-emotional development. So it focuses on skills for learning, which include, you know, attending, listening to the teacher, what clearly outlines what those expectations are for the student. It talks about empathy, it talks about emotion management, problem solving, and so it starts exposing students to these skills from as early as preschool up through, you know, eighth grade. And so because the program is leveled at each grade, it builds on those skills. So even though the foundational skills are the same, it becomes increasingly exposing them to, you know, more challenging skills. It includes, you know, from the early levels, the inclusion of puppets to teach the kids what these skills are and how to interact with others and what to do, to, you know, including music and songs that kids can learn, follow along with up through, you know, as they get older, there's videos that the kids get to watch, they get to process it together, and then provide, you know, feedback, and the, you know, facilitator leads the discussion with the students. It really helps to build these skills in students and make them more available for the academic learning. So we want them to be in the, you know, educational setting to learn, but we need to give them the skills that they need to be able to access the curriculum, which I think is an important part of Second Step. You know, Second Step is very beneficial in that it's aligned with a lot of the things we're already doing in the district. It's aligned with response to intervention, because it's primarily utilized as a tier-one intervention, so makes it universal access for all students, so we can implement it, you know, classroom-wide, school-wide, hopefully eventually, you know, district-wide, so it's really versatile in that way. It also is aligned with PBIS, which is a positive behavior interventions and systems, and so it really correlates with that because it's the proactive teaching of these skills, so at a, you know, level for all the kids. And also is aligned with the common core. You know, one of the key components that I've realized is the piece that the curriculums that we have now really include a lot of the collaborative discussion piece, and Second Step really incorporates that. So it's not just listening to a lecture, it's really the kids listening to that, talking amongst themselves, being paired up, being grouped up, having discussions about what they're learning, how they can apply it, and then also being able to give that feedback to the facilitator. The lessons are pre-planned, so each grade level has its own kit. Everything's laid out, so it makes it super easy for anyone to implement. It could be a general education teacher, school psychologist, such as myself, social work interns. It really makes it much more accessible, I think, to the students because there's a wider range of people that can implement the program. The lessons, there's usually about between 20 to 25 lessons, and it also allows the flexibility of if we have time to implement it on a daily basis, otherwise, you can do it on a weekly basis. So it really allows for a lot of that flexibility of implementing the program. And then just lastly, they continue to expand it, so there's online resources now that are accessible. They're starting to really look at components of mindfulness. That's another, you know, social-emotional thing that's really big right now. I'm sure a lot of you have heard about it, and so I think they're starting to really expand, and they also have expanded to bullying prevention and things, so I think it really is a good foundational program that we can utilize, and then there's components that, you know, we can expand on if we would like to do that in the future, so.
That's great. Sounds like a great program, yeah.
It is, I love it. The students really love it, yeah.
Hold on.
Sorry, Ms. Snell.
I'm wearing a mask. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I'm trying not to spread any germs. How long has it been implemented in the classrooms? How long have you been doing Second Step?
Second Step, I've been utilizing it myself for about the last five years or so.
And what have you seen in the changes in the kids?
The changes I've seen are exciting. It's really neat to see kindergartners talking about empathy and understanding what that means and how that applies to them, being able to, they can express, you know, compassion. Oh, I did this on the playground, so-and-so fell, and I did this, and that's compassion. So the vocabulary that, and the knowledge that it gives the kids is really beneficial, and then obviously, as they get older, they're able to use these problem-solving skills. These are lifelong skills that they really will continue to utilize as they go on through their education and on through adulthood. We all utilize these skills. The feedback from the teachers is really positive as well. It really has helped with not just the social and emotional learning of the kids, but also the behavior management in the classroom. So the feedback I've gotten from teachers has been very positive in that it's helped overall behavior in the classroom, and the teachers can also utilize the vocabulary and things like that. There's posters that go along with it, so there's a lot of visual components, too, that can be carried on even when there's not an actual lesson going on, which is really beneficial. And the kids love it. They memorize the songs and enjoy the videos and the posters and things, and they run up to me on the playground and share what they did and how it applies to what we've been discussing, so it's really neat to see. And I think it just builds that connection between the facilitator and the kid, the students and the teachers, and so it's been very beneficial, and I really enjoyed it. Thank you.
Mrs. Flure.
So does it function as a push-in or a pull-out or a combination? Do you go into the classroom, or do they go out to you?
So since it's intended as a tier-one intervention, that would be more of a push-in. It can be utilized as a tier-two, which would most likely be more of a pull-out, but it would kind of, you would need to expand on the skills, but the, really, the curriculum is intended as a tier-one, so it would be a whole-class push-in, which is the way I've been utilizing it for the last few years.
And so do the teachers request that you come into the classroom if they're having some issues, or is it just automatically scheduled throughout the year that?
There's definitely targeted classrooms. Some of it can come from, you know, teacher request or referrals. If there's a large number of issues going on in a particular classroom, where teachers feel that the students are really struggling with this and would be beneficial, then we do a whole-class push-in, and the teachers sit in on the session, so they're hearing the information as well and are able to utilize the visuals and things that go along with it.
That's great. Thank you.
That's great.
Sounds wonderful. It is wonderful. Thank you so much for your time.
Any other questions?
Intentional.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving on to...
We're going to do...
Informational items.
Yes.
So...
We're going to ask Dr. Jokum to bring Angela up in a second, but before Angela comes up, Mr. Lee Sung is out ill tonight, but he did want me to give an update on what's gone on with safety district-wide so far, okay? First of all, just to remind everybody, the focus is on safety for all students and all staff, okay? And the second focus is on making sure we're proactive and prepared, and that we worked, and the third priority is to work together in partnerships. So in, moving in towards that direction, we already have, he's already met, and I think, I believe Dr. Jokum and Ms. Olson were part of the team that met with the two association leaders, and they talked about everything that they've done over the year in being proactive about safety and what our next steps are going to be. Also, Mr. Holcomb and Mr. Marsh have started the physical site visits. So their first one was, they started on Monday, and they've done three this week. They hope to be done by the middle of May. Target date is May 8th, but you know, you never know if something comes up. And then at that point, they will be able to come back to us at your late meeting in May and provide an overall review of the physical safety of our, of our sites, okay? And then Ms. Olson also worked with an MFT. She had gotten a referral of about seven, five situations. Would you please give an update as to how those were investigated and what the outcome was?
Certainly, there were, there was information out in the communities that there had been five incidents of direct violent threats against our employees, and that is incorrect. There was a case where a student had a BB gun on campus, and it was held, and when it was handled appropriately, there was no threat in connection with him in possession of that. There was another case of an ex-student who actually was of concern to, was concerned to staff on two... to staff on two sites, but again, there was no direct threat made to any one individual. There was also another situation involving emails, which were created from a false email, well, it was an email account, but it was under a different name of an elementary student, and it actually went to an instructor in one of our community programs. There were three emails, and then one of them was forwarded to a teacher, and again, it was not a direct threat to the teacher. Am I missing one?
I don't, I'm sorry.
I think that's five.
Okay. So we've followed up on all of the concerns and closed those cases in those situations. So I'm now gonna ask Dr. Jokum to introduce Angela.
Thank you. When Russell's not here, I get to hijack the agenda, so it's Student Services Night. So one of the questions that has come up among parents and school staff, and I think even among board members, is really just the difference between a threat assessment and a risk assessment, and, you know, to make sure we're all using common language when we're talking about them. I asked Angela, just to give a brief little overview of the difference and what they mean and how they work in our system.
Good evening. President Snell, Vice President Metoye, Dr. Navarro, members of the cabinet, and then distinguished guests, thank you for having me here today. So I'm gonna walk you through just a brief overview as far as like what a risk assessment is and also what a threat assessment is. So when we're referring to the risk assessment process, this is when a student is identified as having some kind of a risk to themselves, meaning suicide. So a trained assessor from Newport Mesa will conduct the assessment and then really determine the level of support that the student is needing. So the level of support is based on the information that's received, so it can be from site-based services to, if the person's in imminent danger, then they'll be referred to the centralized assessment team for further follow-up. So that's basically what a risk assessment is. In regards to a threat assessment, the threat assessment is really focused on targeted school violence. So that's somebody that's a student of concern, that's really identified, has made some kind of a threat that could be concerning. And similar to the risk assessment process, it's really a collaborative approach. So one of the things that we do in the assessment process is identify, assess, and then monitor the student of concern. And so really, it's the site-based team that really determines that process, and so in both situations, it's not an isolated decision that's made, it's made in consultation, really a collaborative effort to provide some additional supports for the student. So again, the services or the interventions really are based on the information that we have during the fact-finding phase, and so this process is really geared and developed by the Secret Service, that they actually developed this process. It's similar to what they use within the context of whenever there's a high official that's being threatened. So they really target it to schools specifically. So that's, in a nutshell, in regards to what the differences are. And so one of the areas that we're looking for in regards to why we're so successful is one, is the support of the board. You guys have really provided a lot of support in regards to all the different implementation for training, resources. The other aspect as well is that everybody's really excited about having additional skillsets or training available to them to be able to provide the additional supports to students whenever these high-risk situations come up, because, you know, we don't want to have the wrong information, so it's really a collaborative effort and generally really getting that skillset available for staff. The other aspect too is that the resources have been really successful. We have a lot of collaborative partnerships in the community with agencies, and then also the Orange County Department of Education has really been a partner with us to really help us to enhance and train some of these different areas. Some of the future areas that we're looking at, we've already identified different gaps for the future, so one would be continuing to train our assessors and really provide that support, because we don't want to have to practice whenever there's a situation that's in front of us. What we wanna do is really enhance the skills for the assessors, for the crisis responders. And then also, we're gonna be rolling out a threat assessment procedure and process during the fall, and I'm actually coordinating that process right now, and we're gonna have consultation and training from the FBI and certified threat managers in the area of school violence. So that's exciting to have to implement in the fall, just to have that comprehensive process going, so.
That's great. Wow.
Questions?
Well, I have a question. So you get a threat from a student, whether it be email or whatever, and so it is assessed at the site, and depending on what it is, it moves up to the district, or is, are the police involved in the site, or what is?
So it's really, sorry, it's really a combination of what happens. So as the information gets to whoever the designated person is, so it could be a teacher, it could be, you know, a community member, so that information gets directed to the admin, and then they also determine to be part of that, they actually connect that assessment or that informational referral to somebody that has mental health background. So it could be a counselor, psychologist, and in a collaboration. So it really depends on the type of threat that's actually made. If it's an imminent situation, definitely law enforcement is part of that process, but it's an interdisciplinary approach that really takes place regarding the threat.
Depending on the threat.
Depending on the threat. So I hate to use that answer, it's depends, right?
No, yeah, you're right. Mrs. Flor.
So you're talking about students. What about community members and teachers? That may, that may be exhibiting the need for threat assessments, or an angry parent comes on campus, you know, something occurs on a campus, interaction between colleagues or whatever. What happens with adults? I guess that's the question, is how do you handle adults that could potentially be threats?
We'll have Phil talk about community, and then if Leona wants to talk about staff, because we handle all different...
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, so I think the word used by Angela interdisciplinary is appropriate. So we have various inter-divisional conversations. If we do have a staff issue, then we're in notification with HR. They take the lead, they would advise us. We would, we're always in communication with law enforcement, I've said this before, we take our lead from law enforcement on various adult issues. I get calls from principals about issues where I would advise them on the conversations to have with adults. Again, as I mentioned in my safety presentation a couple of board meetings back, it starts at a very low level. It could be a conversation that sets boundaries. It could be a stay-away letter. It could be a civility warning. It could be a civility stay-away. It could be a PC 626 stay-away for two weeks, and then a re-entry meeting with the presence of law enforcement. It could be a restraining order. That could be up to three years. So what I can say with absolute certainty is that we take all of these concerns and information seriously. We put it into the mix of our matrix of decision-making and communication with various agencies and divisions under the umbrella of our district, and then we make a decision that is deliberate, consequential, and very definitive in what the expectations are for the district, for any individual adult, parent, member of the community, that kind of thing. So, you know, it's, it's something that, it's something that is kind of a dynamic and ongoing conversation between principals, Angela, directors, assistant superintendents, cabinet members, et cetera.
And we don't wanna forget the school resource officers and the regular PD. So especially if you're dealing with an adult, you know, with our students, we can pull up a lot of information on our students and find out some of the history on them. With adults, we don't have that same capability. So that's where our partnership with law enforcement comes into play, of them doing some of the background information, finding out if people have registered weapons, find out if there's been incidences of domestic violence in the home, or, you know, other issues that would raise our level of concern regarding that individual. So I just, since we introduced one of our SROs tonight, I didn't want us to forget that piece.
Yeah, that's great.
And then, Leona, you wanna talk about staff?
It's very similar to what Phil was describing. The same components are there. It's interdisciplinary in terms of who we work with, depending on the situation. So the first thing, if it was, if there was an incident between two staff members, the administrator would be involved assessing, do I separate them? Can I mediate between the two? At what level of a threat? Do I need to separate them? And I either call, if it's at a very, very heightened, heightened level, am I going to have an SRO step in, or am I calling HR? When HR gets called and we know that there is volatile situation, there's a few things we do. One is, do we need to get the person assistance through a family member to have them come? Do we need to have, refer them to our EAP program? We certainly contact at that point, union leadership, whether it be CSEA or NMFT, and get them involved, because oftentimes they can be the ones that support in that way. But if we are talking, threat has so many names and legs to it, so many components to it, but if we are talking about personal safety towards somebody else, then it's law enforcement that we would involve.
I guess the secondary question is, student, teacher, staff member sees someone else that they perceive as a threat, or they are concerned about, has vocalized something, has expressed, or they themselves are fearful of something that's occurring in the home. My question is, you know, we're talking, in these days and ages, see something, say something. So what are we, what is, how are we communicating that to our students, that it's okay to a self-disclose, or, you know, or as the kids would say, snitch, on someone because they're concerned about someone else? What's the avenue that they have to seek intervention, to seek help?
Well, the most important thing that I think we know that's borne out by the research is that the, the single most influential adult in a kid's life outside of their parents is a teacher. So I think the fact that we do have amazing teachers who build strong relationships with students has created opportunities for us to get information. When students see something, they say something. We get a lot of tips from students through teachers to us. Our campus safety facilitators have built great relationships with students. We get a lot of tips from students through them to us. Our school resource officers, you heard about Ty, he's an amazing school resource officer. We've always had strong resource officers. It's building those relationships that create trust. We're currently looking at ways, there was, there was comments mentioned at the last board meeting about more prominent language and signage on our website, about making sure that students and parents know that if people come forward with information or they are looking for help, that there are no consequences, that we welcome the information, that we, we're looking at language and signage to put up on our website. That's a part of this overall safety conversation. Look, there's been a lot of talk about safety, as we all know. I think that those conversations are welcomed and they're appropriate. I do think that that heightened awareness has also put us in a position to look at training. One of the things that Angela and I have, I know she was gonna mention this tonight, so, but I wanna make sure we get it in, is that we are, we're having the FBI come out next fall with our administrators to do a proper informal threat assessment training for all of our site administrators. But look, in the end, what it all boils down to, it's a see something, say something, like you said, Mrs. Flor. It's a, it's a build relationships philosophy. It is, look, every teacher knows how influential they are in the lives of kids, and so as long as our teachers and our administrators make kids feel welcome and special and valued, I truly believe that's going to be the single biggest factor that helps us promote safe schools in our district. And we do that, and we've been doing that. Unfortunately, our society and the times in which we live have led to outside forces and other issues that are challenging for us, but not insurmountable, to creep into the conversation. I think the conversation needs to go on, and I think we're doing good things about it.
Thank you.
I think so too.
One other point, maybe Angela or Phil can answer this. What happens when a child doesn't, shows high risk? What do we, what happens with that child? And then Phil, what happens when an adult shows high risk?
When they do show high risk or when they don't?
Yeah, when they do.
So in the risk assessment process, we can either look at a couple of different things. One would be either hospitalization, so we would have to call the centralized assessment team, and then also, or involve law enforcement, depending on what the circumstances are. So those are the high-risk options that we have, definitely.
So with the children, we don't, we don't, we act immediately and we don't just leave them sit in the classroom?
No, no, that's absolutely not, yeah. So we wanna make sure that the student is safe and then others are safe. That's our primary.
So, and with adults, all of our administrators are trained, it's not really the right way of saying it, but all of our administrators have the experience and knowledge to know that if there is anything that speaks to any incivility by an adult in the community, they're to call either me, or Dr. Bowermeister, or Dr. Sur, or sometimes all three of us simultaneously, and we address it. In fact, I had a call today from a principal about a parent who got very loud in the front office and made inappropriate comments, and I have a meeting with that parent and the principal, I think, day after tomorrow. So we believe at this time that that's the next appropriate action to deal with that. And again, it's depending on the circumstances, depending on what we know about the parent, depending on the statements that are made, depending on the feelings of personnel and the concerns. We take all of that into the mix, and we make an appropriate decision that we believe is based on promoting the highest levels of safety and security for our students and staff. And that's, and it's immediate, and it's non-negotiable, and it's conclusive, and we get to a good place.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to add that, you know, we had a tragedy at CDM a few weeks back, and no one knows this, but because of the work that our Student Services provides, people don't know this, but at another site, they actually prevented, they intervened on two suicides before that, and then, and then after that tragic incident, the school intervened on two other suicides. So we had four risks in that time that we knew about. So, you know, I think our goal is to make sure we never have any, so this is why we keep getting this training. I also wanted to let you know that Mr. Lee Sung did schedule the training for all the principals by our SROs. So they went through a threat assessment on, I think, last week? Oh, was this week? Okay. All right? And the SROs are making their ways around our elementary schools. So they're visiting the schools and being introduced and meeting with staff and beginning that type of communication and relationship building with our elementary schools. So a lot of steps have been taken in the last couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
So I have one more informational item?
Oh, oh, sorry.
We're entering the negotiation season, and I'm a little surprised. We've had, the rhetoric's heated up a little bit, and it's a bit unusual, because usually that happens after we've had a chance to be at the table and exchange ideas, and then the rhetoric gets a little raised. And I just wanted to let you know that our team is committed to bargaining in good faith. We always have. And I think that what results when we bargain in good faith, good things happen for this district, okay? Of course, your goal, or your missive to us is retain and recruit the best, and we do that. And we do that because we're allowed to provide attractive employment packages for new employees and try to maintain our standing in the county with those employees that we already have here. I did wanna share with you what happened with the result of our, of the last five, six years of our good-faith bargaining, okay? And so I did want, and this is about the work we've done with the Federation in particular. We haven't started our bargaining yet with CSEA. But with our Federation, in 2014, 15, you approved, authorized a 6% raise for all of the certified and classified employees. In 2015, 16, you authorized a 2.5% raise, and you authorized us to raise our health benefits cap by 0.63, okay? It wasn't a lot, but it was enough to cover an increase. In 2016, 17, the associations, both... In 2016-17, the associations both asset everything go to health and welfare. And in that year, you authorized what would be equal to a salary increase of 3.31% to employees. In 2017, we entered on a two-year agreement for a 5% raise, 2.5 in 1718, 2.5% in 1819. When you look at the salary increase for our employees, that's over six years, that's a 13.5% increase for our employees on salary. It's a total of 4% increase on health and welfare, or what would be equal to a 4% raise just in health and welfare. So when you look at a total compensation increase over the last six years, it's a 17.5% increase that we provided. Now, this is something we came to an agreement at the bargaining table, both sides coming in and bargaining in good faith. We've also added to our budget about 1.5 million to provide additional prep time for primary grade teachers, who didn't have any prep time at that point. Why the 1.5 million? We had to hire extra teachers to expand our music program, and our science program, and maybe even our PE program, so that we could have the specialists that would cover their classes. So when you take it all into consideration, that was, that's about a $15 million investment made into NMFT over those six years. So we just want to keep, let everybody know, the public know, and let NMFT know that we're ready to go to the table and bargain in good faith, and continue to work on providing a package that recruits and retains the best.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, well, we're going to go on to community input.
Okay, speakers, for items on discussion-action calendar will be held until that item is considered by the Board. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Board on consent calendar-agenda items, or on non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board. Per Board Policy 9323, each individual speaker will have three minutes to cover one or multiple topics, and speakers may not see unused minutes to other speakers, and there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per topic. With Board consent, the President may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to speak. The Board, staff, or members of the public may request that a specific item on consent be moved to discussion-action. Requests to move consent items must be received prior to the time the Board takes action on the consent calendars. Depending upon the nature of the comments, the Board President or Superintendent may respond, or the President may call upon Board members for brief comments, questions of clarification, provide a reference to staff or other resources for factual information, or request the Superintendent to report back to the Board at a subsequent meeting concerning the matter. However, in compliance with Board policy and the Ralph M. Brown Act, the Board is not permitted to take action on non-agenda items. When addressing the Board, it is helpful if you state your name and address. All comments are recorded in full on the meeting video record that is posted as a courtesy on our website at www.nmusd.us. DVD copies of the complete meeting are available to check out from the Superintendent's office for three business days, or for purchase for $1. Please include any accessibility needs with your DVD request.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Steve Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Snell. Good evening, everyone. Mrs. Snell, a recent CPRA request revealed that in January 18th email, you wrote the following about Sandy Asper, a respected member of the Newport Mesa community. Quote, "The latest Sandy posts, a joke, especially her cartoons. I believe she is losing it," unquote. Mrs. Snell, I find this comical. You spend about $21,000 to get elected to a job that pays you roughly $450 a month, and you claim that Sandy's losing it. Later in the same email, you mentioned a few names, including mine, and you called us haters. In one email, you maligned a respected citizen, and labeled several others. "Mrs. Snell, if you were in high school, you could be suspended for bullying." But you're not in high school. You're a member of the school board, and none of your colleagues will give a thought to any sort of reprimand, despite the fact that your comments are irresponsible, reckless, and that you have violated the code of conduct of the Board of Trustees. So I just did it for them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Lori Smith.
Good evening, Board, visitors of the community. I'm retired teacher, grandparent, and parent of Newport Mesa students. I came to talk on safety. I, first and foremost, before teaching, education safety is the most important thing, as we all know, and now in the 21st century, we have new challenges. I appreciate hearing from staff tonight, from all of you, the different steps that you have been taking. You appear to have heard, heard the news, and heard what's going on in our community and our concerns. It is about life or death. I am concerned that we have a comprehensive plan, that we really understand. To me, it sounds like a monster project. It's going to take an incredible amount of collaboration with different, with the cities. We have two cities, not just one, in Newport Mesa. It takes skilled professionals. That's going to be huge. We cannot piecemeal this. We cannot have a fragmented program anymore. We have to have something comprehensive and everyone on board. Communication will be key, and ongoing communication will be really important. I'm not an expert. I can do what you can do, and read. I can look at public systems and know that there's just a whole lot of pieces here. Speaking of the pieces, it was great to hear the principals are getting trained. Student Services, it's great to hear what they're doing with bullying and threat assessment. I knew that was going on, but we have to look at that piece as being, again, a comprehensive plan, that that department is tied in, because we can see that we're not all on board, and it's got to be tied on board with this plan. Even in Los Alamos, they have actually a department at Los Alamos Unified that is safety and student services tied in one department. Once developed, we've got to consider annual and mid-year training. Speaking to our union, our union leaders about, should we be doing this in the fall? Should it be mandated training? It doesn't take a nurse, I was a nurse, but safety takes very routine, regular, structured training, and it takes ongoing reassessment to make sure we're up with what's happening in our changing environments. And of course, no holes. We have principals who change, they've got a safety plan on their site, and they don't really know it. They haven't had time to get on board. So if they transition, change to another school, if we get a new principal like at Costa Mesa, does that principal have a buddy? Do they have someone getting them up to speed, first and foremost, on safety? I mean, it's before curriculum. And I know we all don't like to hear about it, that's the reality. Dr. Sung, I appreciate hearing he's involved researching. I think, is he an expert? Is this retired policeman an expert? I appreciate you asking yourselves those questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Britt Doughty.
Good evening, President Snell, members of the Board, Dr. Navarro, members of the Cabinet and the public. I'm Britt Doughty. I'm president of the Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers. And so what I want to speak to this evening was related to today's weather. It was rather warm outside today, and it's a precursor of more heat that will come a little bit later this spring. And fortunately, you know, it's predicted that today's high temperatures are going to go back to normal in the next few days. In the fall of 2015, NMFT made some specific requests for some guidance and guidelines for what to do when it's overheated in classrooms. And there was a formal process for making those requests, and that process is still ongoing, third school year after the request was made, so it's about two and a half years after that. But there's some things that can be done that we're asking for, and independent of that process, what we're looking for is to have resolutions that impact the lives of children and employees to make it better. And these are things like, that don't cost money. How can we be, how can we use pre-approved instructional plans creatively, so that you alternate when you're doing high academic work versus, you know, less stressful work? What do we do in terms of district-wide for athletics and PE classes? And what do we require that's done? Not just a recommendation, but what's the policy? What do we do to make sure that there is a written plan that shares air-conditioned spaces, and it doesn't rely on personal relationships between different staff members? That it's been thoughtfully created in advance of that weather? And when should this, when it's appropriate for this plan to go into place? What are the temperature ranges when it should go into place? Is it something that should go in place across the district, or it's just based on schools, based on the conditions and the facilities of that independent school? These are some ideas that we've tried to put forward that don't cost money. They are, they don't impact instructional time, because you're using pre-approved instructional times. We're not reducing the school day, we're just creatively modifying it. We need some help. We need to get these things taken care of. We know that it's still going to take a couple of years to get the air conditioning installed. So in advance of that, what can we do to try to help these thousands or hundreds of students and employees that are at the schools that won't have fully introduced air conditioning for a couple of years? What can we do in the meantime to help with that? And is it site-by-site, or do we have kind of a district-wide guidelines that can help provide guidance? Thank you.
Just a comment. I was going through some really old emails that I didn't even know existed, and I found 2014, there was an advisory, a guidelines advisory posted. It was September of 2014. And so, we have a heat advisory guideline, so I'm kind of, and I know we can't have a conversation, maybe we will after. I'm a little confused on what you're looking for, because we do have it. We've had it since before 2014, I'm sure, but anyway, I'll send that to you, just so you know what we did at that point. Oh, I have it, one more card. Cynthia Blackwell.
I was going to talk on another topic tonight, and I'm going to save that for two weeks from now, and that'll be a really good one, because I'm going to have a lot of information then. But tonight, I'm going to talk about the High School Voter Education Weeks, which is April 16th to the 27th, to the 27th, 2018. The California Education Code designates the last two full weeks in April and September to be High School Voter Education Weeks. This provides an opportunity for high schools and their students to partner with county election officials to promote civic education and participation on campus, and foster an environment that cultivates lifelong voters and active citizens. So I got this a few weeks ago, after I attended the March for Your Lives that was held in Huntington Beach, and it was an amazing event. It was put on by 10 different kids from five different high schools in Huntington Beach. And the common thread most of those kids had is, they were first, they were all under 18, and they were all members, almost all of them were members of the Model United Nations Program, which is a program before my children ever got into high school, I was asking about. And at the time, Chuck Kinman was like, "Oh, yeah, we know about that. Yeah, it's a great program, and we should get it here." And the usual lip service from, you know, admin, never did anything about it. So these kids got up, they were articulate, they were well-informed, and they were really pushing voter registration. So then I started looking at our school sites, on the different school sites. Estancia has a day planned, I think it's Thursday, April 12. Vicki's shaking her head, yes. They have it on their website, they have a whole thing going. So I thought, well, I'm going to call Costa Mesa, my alma mater, and my children's alma mater. I talked to ASB, they knew nothing, she knew nothing, so she put me off to somebody else who thought, there was a student, maybe she thought there was a student that might be involved in doing something. And never got a reply back from the teacher that I reached out to. And I just think this is a huge opportunity that our high school kids are missing out on, and I'm proud of Estancia that somebody had the wherewithal to pull it together over there, but it's sad that the other four high schools are doing absolutely nothing to foster this type of interaction with something that's going to affect them now, and for really the rest of their lives, to become lifelong voters. So I just wanted to point out that that was a big, you know, flaw that should have been addressed, and should be addressed, because they still have time, even though their spring break going on next week. So that was it, and I will see you in two weeks to talk about a safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Snell?
Yes, I just wanted to say, I just actually learned that you can pre-register 16-year-olds. That's, yeah.
They're doing it already. The DMV is already, when the kid gets their permission slip.
Okay, Mrs. Flore.
Yeah, a couple of things. One, as I wanted to respond to that, that now the DMV, it's a new law, that they can pre-register, so that a student is pre-registered at the age of 16, when they actually go to the DMV to get their first driver's license, and they will be registered to vote automatically. They'll be able to vote in their first election when they turn 18. The second thing, perhaps, Dr. Navarro, you can give us some information on, is two things. One is, since we're hearing a lot about the weather and the heat advisory, and based on the information that Ms. Snell just mentioned about the plan, and as you said, you know, staffs change, information changes. I don't think Britt was president of NMFT back then, so perhaps we can get all of that information back out, start posting it back on our website, exactly what has transpired relative to that, so that we can make sure that everybody is on board, and we just start posting that information on our website. The second thing is, in regards to, just wanted to have a couple of comments, and perhaps get some history on our safety plans. If I remember correctly, we spent about $500,000 prior to you arriving, which was quite comprehensive. It was the individuals coming in from, I think they were Irvine, they had had several significant threat assessments done there, and they were, they came in and did lots of training of our staffs at the time. They did tabletops. Each school had their own, did their own tabletops, so everybody had that. And then I believe, two and a half years ago, when we started working with, deciding about Anderson and our fencing, we also had an individual come out, and we walked all the campuses and did a complete safety plan at that time. So it's not, and then every year, our staff have to update their safety plans, because we get them. So I think that it's really imperative that we start posting that information back up there again, because I think people have forgotten what we have done, and they're only hearing what we haven't done, but we've done a lot. And it's always ongoing, and I think this is, you know, as you said, it's critical, but I think that posting all these reports back up there, pulling them out of the archives, they made presentations here, both of the individuals made significant, long, hour-long presentations about safety. And so I would suggest that we get that stuff back up on the website, so, and it's easily accessible, and it's highlighted under safety, so that we can have, you know, have a cogent conversation about our next steps and assist with that. Because both, in both of those instances, I can remember them talking about, we didn't want to display too much, because the police told us, please do not, do not, there are certain things that we don't train, and the same thing with, in terms of training our SROs and all of that, police are trained to kill. They are not trained to, on safety. They're trained to kill the intruder. That was, that's, they were very clear about that, and that that's what they're going in for. And so we're trying to train and protect our students, and they're out to get rid of the, get rid of the threat as expeditiously as possible. So I think that's really important, that we have, have that information. So thank you.
Yeah, I think I just want to go back, first of all, sitting at the dais is one of the two guys who tackled the guy with the gun at Estancia.
Yes.
Okay, and at our last meeting was, it was an implication that we don't take safety seriously. Well, there's actual proof that, you know, we do take safety seriously. No one planned that. In fact, Dr. Bowermeister had just had a table talk with his teachers, the week, or the day before, about, two days before, about an armed intruder. And so they made some really good decisions when that happened. As far as the document that Mrs. Snell's referring to, we post that every time to principals. We send it out every time we think there's going to be a high heat event. And I know that Dr. Sur works with the elementary principals to make sure that he understands what their plans are, and how they're going to share the air, the air-conditioned rooms, and how they're going to maybe go to a more comfortable curriculum for students. And Dr. Bowermeister makes sure he's in communication with all the secondary schools. It's actually, Dr. Bowermeister was one of his first duties, created that plan in 2013, when he came on board. And so we've posted that, we've actually distributed that every time there's going to be a high heat event. And we check, double-check with our And we check, double-check with our principals. As far as our safety plans, well, as you said, we have been on the SEM system, the State Emergency Management System, for 15, maybe 20 years. And we have, those, that system has been updated. The latest iteration came this year, and you know that Mrs. Galey, even though she's not the safety coordinator, but because she's in charge of school site council, who is asked to sign off on that safety plan, updated the plans this year, and all of our schools updated their plans. The goal is, that she would like to have, is to spend the summer updating those plans so that principals aren't reviewing and updating in the middle of the year, and that we do all the training at the beginning of the year. I think everything that was mentioned is, are the exact reasons that we asked Mr. Lee Sung to take the lead on this. In my absence, he had seen some disconnects that he was not comfortable with, because safety is a responsibility in every division. And so we need to network that more closely. And so under his leadership, they started having safety meetings and started listing all the things I shared with you, they have 26 items that they want to take care of right now. And so putting him in a position where he can address all of these things, it will result in a better communication system. It will result in some of the things that are very practical. So for example, people don't know this, but substitutes should be getting a packet. I know they did at Costa Mesa when I was the principal. In this, in the packet is the safety plan in an abbreviated form, so they know how to exit and, and what to do, and what the different signals mean. And so those are the types of things we want to make sure and confirm that we're doing. We want to articulate a better system between our divisions. You know that Student Services is going to have part of that plan, Ed Services has, going to have part of that plan, Business Services is going to have part of the plan, and then HR is going to be involved as well. And quite frankly, when we have a major issue, we actually ask board members to go and help with the parent reunification site. And if it's in your area, that's where teams go. I remember when we had the situation at Estancia, it was Mr. Brooks who was down there helping with the reunification gate. And that's what we ask your role to be, is to go out and work with parents in those certain emergencies. I don't think there's anything here that we shouldn't be reviewing, and I don't think there's anything here that Mr. Lee Sung doesn't plan on reviewing. So he'll be back, I hope, soon. I hope he doesn't have a, the really bad bug again. But he promises to give you, keep you updated on everything that we're doing.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Yelsey.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to comment on something I was going to say in the board report, but I know we lose a lot of people, and it's relevant to a comment that Mrs. Blackwell made. In Newport Beach at, for Newport Harbor and Cronin Delmar High School, the students are involved in what's called the Mayor's Youth Council at City Hall. They meet there monthly. As a spin-off of that, in addition to being on the Mayor's Youth Council, some of the students who really are very engaged and want to be more involved in government, have created this year a Council of Youth Ambassadors. And that group is having their first forum, actually that they're totally putting on this Saturday. And so now that we have people, it's a good time to talk about it. It's a political outreach fair, and it's going to be at the Civic Center from 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock on Saturday. And they've invited and had confirmations from seven, I believe, candidates who are running for the 48th Congressional District election coming up. So they're very excited about that. But in addition to that, they are going to be registering 18-year-olds to vote and pre-registering those who are younger. And they've put out the word at both those high schools, and so they are doing programs at, at both the Newport High Schools, I know, in terms of getting kids registered. So I'm glad you were here to hear that, and I didn't like that.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Matoye.
And I was going to refer, Dr. Baumeister and I talked, and he said that all the principals have a plan, but that the first week of that plan is our spring break, doesn't mean we can't do the second week. And I haven't gotten word back yet either, but I just got back last night and spent most of today coughing, so in all fairness, I didn't finish up with my work because I couldn't complete a sentence without choking over the phone. I also, I would have asked Mr. Lee Sung, but Dr. Navarro, if you could talk with him to say that, I would like to see included in the safety plan, because I agree, Mrs. Smith, that we have to, we have to practice, and it has to be continual and renewed, because we have new staff, or you are at a new site and things are different. So if maybe the dates of any simulations that are done on their site, or the dates that was reviewed with the campus.
Good idea.
That way, that way the public know, they may not know all the steps that happened, but they know that the staff was reviewed on such and such a date. And, and for me, with my kids in school, I would feel much more comfortable knowing that, oh, school starts September 3rd, September, August, they went over this, so that before the kids even got there. So if we could include that, I think that would.
And he did speak with principals about recommitting this spring to doing some additional drills and, and practice. We will get that information to you.
Yeah, I do want to wait till September, yeah.
And I know that Dr. Sur knows that we keep a, is it a Google Doc? Or is it a data tracking?
Document tracking.
Document tracking, where all the principals enter when they've had their drills and when they, what, what a drill it was. And so we can share that with the board and show you that when they've done these things. I do believe that we practice too many fire drills.
Yeah, we do, we were mandated every month to have a fire drill.
And I think that's one of the first thing that Mr. Lee Sung is tackling, is that we need to practice all our drills on a regular basis, so.
And maybe not.
Like I said, I didn't think I heard, I didn't hear anything that he hasn't already considered that is invaluable.
Okay, any more comments? Okay, so I don't know if you have more to say, superintendent report?
I just would like to let you know that, you know, I think you've had the opportunity to visit two elementary schools and meet with two principals who are pursuing the same goal, but they add their own little style to the goal. And I'm really pleased that you learned that they use data to make decisions about individual students, and they actually know who those students are. And so you got to visit College Park, and you got to visit Paul Arino. And I know that you know that, Paul Arino, that principal knows that 90% of her kids are at third grade level, that are in third grade. But you also know that she doesn't think that's good enough. If you're in half a year through, half a year through third grade, you should be at 3.6, you know? And that's, her goals are not to have them at 3.0 by the time that June comes, but to have them closer to 4.0. And I know that you got the same information, or you learned the same thing in a different style, from College Park. So I just want to tell you that I'm really proud of the work that's been going on with the intervention program in our elementary schools. I think, you know, we are in the middle of integrating new materials, and last year was a huge, two huge adoptions of instructional materials. And that does diminish your instructional program, but it's worth the time and it's worth the effort to find the, the materials that teachers want. And I think that in a couple of years, we'll start to see, well, if not a couple of years, pretty soon, we'll start seeing the fruit of that, that work. I'd also like to commend you for the work you did in making sure we did PLCs years ago, because that set the stage for how we look at data in the district. And maybe we don't call them PLCs anymore, but they are PLCs when they work with their grade-level teams and look at what kids need, and how they shift them around in all the different groups, and how these kids get enrichment, and how these kids get intervention, and how these kids get a little bit added to their, because they're on target.
Great. Ah, Ms. Matoye.
And it was exciting to see the evidence of student growth in grade levels that the public won't see because ESPEC doesn't happen until third grade. So we'll get to see some with Dr. Nagy's third graders who are doing so well. But so much of the growth and effort that we saw with the children was on, on the primary and kindergarten and first grade levels, where if we can catch them, if we can get the kids that background. So it was, it was wonderful to see that.
So I did ask staff to make sure that we schedule Mr. Rodriguez to come and talk and share their, share his strategies with the public.
Oh, good.
He won't be sharing student names, but he'll be sharing strategies.
Good.
Perfect.
That would be great.
Dr. Navarro, in terms of that, would there, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Would it be possible that include, in addition to Dr., Mr. Rodriguez coming, is that we have one of the intervention teachers? Because I think that is absolutely critical and key, because I'm finding that the, the students are really benefiting from that, the new model of being able to pull kids out and work with the intervention, these hourly intervention teachers. And, and now we have them basically across, across the district. I know Mariners now has four intervention teachers, who, so it's amazing the work that they're doing, so if he could bring, or we could, you know, bring a couple of them to, so they can explain their process and their program.
I see Mr. Drake and Dr. Sur taking notes, and that's good. I think what we also would like you'd like to bring are one of the TOSAs. Because the TOSAs are playing incredible role at each of their schools, working with the intervention teachers and working with the principals. And so they, they, everybody loves their TOSA.
Oh, yes, they do.
You know, and so it's very popular. So I think, John, if we could do that, that'd be great.
Well, and I think what impressed me especially was, in terms of the teachers at each of these two sites onboard, that I know that Rich was talking about, that he was really focusing in because he had, when he got there, he noticed that sixth grade was really struggling with the number of proficiency students, and so, and third, fourth, and fifth were doing okay, so, and he wanted to focus in kindergarten and third. But then kindergarten, third got it, and sixth was getting it. Third, fourth, and fifth said, no, we want, we want to participate too. We want our students to have the benefit. And so I'm really commending, it's really gratifying to see the number of teachers at both of these sites, and I'm assuming that it's occurring across the district, that teachers are cross-teaching, they're collaborating, they're, they're taking small groups, and they not necessarily be their kids, but they're, 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 they're using their strengths in terms of, in terms of the pedagogy and the teaching. So it's, it's just fabulous to watch the energy.
You bring up a good point during that time, is that when you have your intervention teachers, you actually have the smallest class size of the day for that program, because they, they'll be working with five or six students each.
Exactly.
And providing individualized attention to those students. So it's, I believe that what these principals bring is some sound, research-based practices that make a lot of sense. And I don't think there's an educator who wouldn't want to make a difference in a kid's life. And I think that's why our highly-trained teachers are jumping onboard and embracing this strategy. But I think you'll hear a lot of that when Mr. Drake or Dr. Sur arrange for the presentation.
Moving on to the consent calendar. Need a motion?
Oh, I have to read it first.
Oh, read it. Oh, I'm sorry. Is that all right?
All items listed in the consent calendar are considered by the board to be routine and will be acted by the board in one motion. This includes the consent calendars for business, education services, human resources, student support services, and superintendent. There will be no discussion of these actions prior to the board votes on the motion unless members of the public, staff, or board request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar. Public requests for items to be discussed and/or removed should be submitted in writing prior to the board's consideration of the consent calendar.
Move adoption of the consent calendar?
I do have just a couple of questions on a couple of them.
Okay, I, I want to, since, since I'm the president, I go first.
Yeah, absolutely.
I want to move 17D8 to, which is approved master contract for transition services, promotional video, videographer.
Yeah.
To discussion.
I thought that was moved.
Okay.
And I just have a couple of comments. One is 17D6, which is the Orange County Department of Ed and Students' Summer School.
Okay. You want to move it, or you just have comments?
I just have a comment. And 17C1 through 17C3.
What was the first one, number that you said? Thank you.
And I can go, I can wait till afterwards, I, they're not, it's not really biggies.
Wait, what are you pulling?
I don't want, I don't necessarily want to poll, but I do, I do, I have a request.
So before we vote, how about if you have a, talk about it?
Yeah.
Okay, so 17C1, 2, and 3 are all of the certificated, classified supervisory, supervisory and manage, and confidential, and also the management salary schedule. So I have a couple of questions. One is, are they posted on our website? I think they're required to be posted, correct?
They will be as soon as you approve them tonight.
Second is, where do our special, our, you know, like our music teachers, do they fall, are they within, are they within the specific, just in the certificated, or are they, because I noticed there's, there's other ones that are pulled out.
Music teachers are included in salary number 44, which is the first one of the teachers.
Okay. And then, is it possible that we could get the number of teachers, not now, but could we get the number of teachers that are each in ones, in this, in the, in the cell, you know, just in the, in the column? How many teachers at the high, the high level?
The various cells.
You know, the various, because, you know, when I was, when I was looking at it, I went, there are some teachers that are making more than some of our assistant principals and a, or the nutrition, like nutrition, whatever the supervisory number three is, is like at 123, but teachers, there's a couple of teachers that are making 126 in our, well, our highest salaries, our highest apparently on this is 122, 954, but that doesn't include, and I wasn't sure how much the board certification, the board certi-
National Board Certification.
The national board certification, and there was a couple of other ones.
Doctor.
There's a, there's BCLAD at $850 per year, PhD.
So we'll ask that from Mr. Trader's division, because he manages payroll, and they'll be able to figure that out. Is that right, Mr. Trader?
I mean, just, just, just I'd like to know whether, you know, are we at the, at the starting, I mean, it's interesting, because here it is, an interim or emergency credential teachers at 51,000. Now, when I started teaching back in, was 9308 for the entire year, and they took it in 10 monthly increments. You didn't have an option. So it was 9308, that was my total salary. And I was a special ed teacher, so I was like, oh.
And you were happy to get it when we got it.
And that was in 1976.
Okay, so, and 17D6, you want to talk about that?
17D6, I just have a question. I'm, I'm not opposed to it, even though it's with the Orange County Department of Ed.
I know how much you want them.
I just want to have, there was no, and I don't remember last year, I don't remember, there's no cost associated with it, so there's no, there's not a, you know, how much is this costing us per student? Wasn't sure. And the second one is, has to do with accountability. We're assuming that they're following the state standards in the classroom that they're, that they're taking the class. Because that's what we assume. We assume that when we're teaching our kids, we are meeting the state standards. So I just want to be clear that their whole, they, they are still having the high standards, these kids are going to class, they're being taught by teachers, and they are meeting state standards or at the grade, at the grade level, so that when they come back with an A in a class, it really means an A in a class, and they're not coming back and going saying, oh, I didn't learn that. So that's just my question.
Yeah.
Good evening, President Snell, Ms. Matoye, board members. Dr. Navarro in cabinet. So, Student Services oversees the processing of summer school applications through the county. It's one of a few different options that students have to matriculate credits. It is no cost to the Newport-Mason Unified School District because there are qualifying factors that allow the, the access program, as it's colloquially referred to, to capture ADA. And that is, that they have at least four or more truancies, full-day truancies, that they are on formal probation, or that they are under the terms of an expulsion agreement. So typically, students who have absence issues are students who could benefit from this. There are other summer school options, as you're well aware of, that are offered by the district. And I would, I would defer to my colleagues in the Ed Division for, for information on that. But we served about 300 students last year through the Access Summer Program who attained anywhere from five to 15 credits. So, you know, that's about 3,000 credits on average that, that were, that students are able to recapture. It is a, it is a resource issue, it's a challenge for us. We do have students who don't do well in school throughout the year and use this as an option. Mrs. Flor, as, as to your answer, we, we obviously want students in the Newport-Mason Unified School District educated by the teachers of the- District educated by the teachers of the Newport Mesa Unified School District. We believe that, that they are the professionals that we rely on to get kids through the various graduation requirements and to matriculate with a diploma that we can say has a certain level of cachet, if you will. So, but we do have a board policy that does allow for the transfer of up to ten units of credit from other institutions. This isn't just access. This could be community colleges, et cetera. And so they have their own accrediting requirements and, and expectations. I can't speak with expertise to the accrediting requirements and accreditations of access. I can certainly come back to you at a later date to find out, to get information and let you know what their accrediting process is. I do believe the Western Association of Schools and Colleges is involved on some level, but I can't today speak with a high degree of certainty to that point. We do know of situations, in the interest of full disclosure, we do know of situations where we have students who come back from an access curriculum and struggle a little bit with the challenges that exist in our, in, in our classrooms, because the standards in Newport Mesa are higher. The expectations are higher. They're among the highest in the state, I would, I would argue. So, but that's where teacher support, teacher interventions, interventions in the school, credit recovery, after-school tutoring, and other things should be in play also in this potpourri of options, if you will, that students have to be successful in school. So we need access. It's a, it's a good partnership, but we are aware of, of those concerns that you, you have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Yelsey, do you have?
I was going to pull the same item you did.
Oh, okay.
Seventeen D eight.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, so we have a motion to.
I'll amend it.
Okay.
I move that we approve the consent calendar with the exception of seventeen D eight for discussion.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it carries. So now we'll go to. We don't, we don't, we don't have anything, so.
Now you do. Now you do. Seventeen?
Seventeen.
D eight.
D.
D eight, and that would be Dr. Jokum.
We're going to discussion, and we're going to talk about seventeen D eight. Okay.
Yes.
That would be Dr. Jokum.
That's, that's my item.
I'm on with you.
Are you surprised? I'm going to call Terry Wirt up. Terry is our program specialist in our adult transition program, our STEP program. And as the board knows, and the public may or may not know, the district has a responsibility for a certain population of students with special needs to provide services until the age of twenty-two. So often our students, after they've matriculated out of a high school program, they will go on to our adult transition program, which looks very different. You know, there's much more community-based involvement, job opportunities, work opportunities, really trying to build independence. And so Terry and her staff came up with this idea, so I just wanted them to share it with you a little bit, because it's a little feel-good story, and we need those every once in a while. So Terry, go ahead.
Okay. I have a very brief PowerPoint and a little sample of Timothy's video production. So.
I don't.
I think there's one more.
We need the audiovisual guy.
John, or could you, do you help give her a hand?
Ryan's out there.
Oh.
Here he comes.
Oh, there's Ryan, okay.
Here he comes. I'm sorry, Ryan, that's what you call him. Paging Ryan. Oh, she did it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
So this idea for the video, oh, I'm sorry. I'm so thankful to be here.
Hi, Terry.
Very good to see you, and thank you for having me, cabinet members.
Thanks for coming.
Board members. But as Dr. Jokum introduced me, and she was telling you all about the STEP program, but really Transition Services is so much more than just the STEP program. That's why we wanted to make this video. So what we do is we provide transition activities to all the special education students in high school and our adult transition programs. We have a workability grant. We also have our TPP grant, which is our transition partnership with the Department of Rehab. We also have a website. We have parent trainings. We have teacher trainings. We support special education teachers with all of their transition needs. We provide all the assessments that the transition, that the special education teachers for mild, moderate, and moderate severe students do for their IEPs. We also work with the STEP program, but that's only one part of what Transition Services do. So last year, when I was at the board meeting, and we were talking about it, and everybody just thought Transition Services was STEP. So we talked to our Department of Rehab partners. We wrote it into our grant to pay for a promotional video. We thought, what a great idea, but who's going to do it? So we have a prior student who was a Newport Mesa student, Timothy Wagner. He participated in our workability and TPP program while in high school. He graduated. He went to Orange Coast College for a certificate in film. So he's had multiple editing and lighting projects for other people, but he's never had the opportunity to make a full video. So I actually have here a little sample of Timothy's work. We had to edit quite a bit out of it for this presentation, but you'll see at the end, the credits will show all the different areas that he worked on that, this production. Oh, it's just coming from here. Sorry.
I'm so sorry. We, I didn't know. We have to.
Los Angeles, the city of angels and the boulevard of broken dreams. Where stars rise and stars fall, in the bright of the lights, the dark of the shadows, unprotected Jim Mason, and this is my city.
Really, Mason? Would we enforce those stereotypes, bro?
William's a crispy green.
I know a place where we can go, to lay the troubles down within your soul. I know a place where love flows. Take the stains, make your body less slow. Like a tide, it is a round swing.
Okay, so you'll see that Timothy had a huge part of this production, and you'll also see on there, he was the actor. Believe me, his editing skills are way better than that. So I wanted to thank you for your support. I hope that you'll approve our board item. And we're all just really excited about it. And hopefully, next year, I'll be back here showing you the video.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you so much. Any questions?
That's terrific.
Okay, so I need a motion.
Move approval of the Master Contract for Transition Services Promotional Video Videographer two thousand seventeen eighteen.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are going to go to board member reports, and we'll start with Mrs. Yelsey.
Thank you. It's, I think because there wasn't a first week, it seems like a long time since we met. Mrs. Matoye and I both attended the Police Association Breakfast of Newport Beach, and, which is always a great event, and they honor incredible police every year with, with their stories. And I think the most moving one for me was the office, Newport Beach officer who was off-duty at the time in Las Vegas during the Las Vegas shootings. And he helped fifty people get to safety, all while he had been shot in the leg and didn't get help for his own body for five hours while he was helping other people. And it was a really moving story. And obviously, we appreciate all of our officers in this area, and it's, it's just a wonderful morning. I attended the Cronodelmar Honorary Service Awards, which is also always a great event, because they honor some very deserving people, parents, teachers, other.
Community members.
Other staff who, who work there. And there, for me, the most moving presentation was for Jesse Murray, who is a special ed instructional assistant. Got up to read why he, he nominated him, and talked about how much he appreciated his help academically and socially, and in all areas, but mostly he was his friend. And then his mother got up to speak and said it's because of Jesse that her son would be going to college next year. And it was, it was really very moving, and it was nice to see him recognized. And I know a lot of the staff and parents over at the school have felt for years that he's been amazing. I went to see Footloose with some other members here at Cronodelmar. It was very energetic, exciting, and I, I love Footloose. So it was a wonderful production. And then I saw Newport Coast Elementary School's Madagascar, the musical, which was pretty amazing with the, the parents outdo themselves with costumes and sets and, and all of that. And the acting was incredible. And they'll be up at the high school soon, so that was fun. And then I talked a little about the youth council, so I won't get into that a whole lot. But, oh, one other thing I wanted to say, and I'll pass these out, that Newport Beach, the city, is starting a program at the end of this month, and I'll pass these down. It's called Study Break. And they are providing, the Department of Recreation is, is providing programs for anybody who goes to Newport Harbor High School or Cronodelmar High School. And they're on Wednesday evenings at five-thirty. But the topics are, for instance, mindfulness and meditation. There's an art night, a fashion design sketching, unique fitness and strength, healthy recipes and cooking. And then they're having a paddle night with UCI where they can do paddle boarding, all kinds of activities. And I was talking to Laura Detweiler, who's the head of the Recreation Department in Newport Beach, and she said they've really been touched by the real challenges that Cronodelmar has had recently. And they, this, this is what they wanted to do to help out. It's not tutoring, because the kids have tutoring in other places. It's just to get a break from what they're doing. So they're trying to get the word out and.
Study Break.
Study Break.
It's free.
Yeah.
And it's free.
And which is a really, it's, it's free to the kids who participate, and they don't have to pre-register. They can just show up. And I know they are getting this out at the schools, but if you know other people, you may want to pass that along. And then one other thing I want to thank some of my fellow members who were on my team for Unity Torch Walk for Special Olympics in Newport Beach. It was a great event at the Civic Center. There were probably, it was the first year they did this. It was a community event to, to support Special Olympics. And we had our CDM Sparkle cheerleaders were there greeting everybody. And it was really a very fun event. And it was a basketball shoot hoop contest, and they were low kid-sized basketballs, but my team didn't do so great, but I want to commend them anyhow. Bonnie Adams, Bonnie, Bonnie Hinton, Carrie Adams, and Candy Barella were on my team. And we are going to practice, because next year, we're going to do a lot better. Some of these kids pulled in ringers for their team, so.
What did you have to do?
One special ed.
Shoot hoops.
Athlete on each of our teams, and they were the best.
Shoot hoop, okay.
They know how to do it, too. So it was a lot of fun.
I enjoyed going to College Park, and I had to work. I couldn't get it off to be able to see Amy the same day, but we're planning to go over as well. And, but it's just the warm welcome with the staff there and how hard the teachers were working, just, it was really terrific. So appreciate that, and look forward to more, because I know everyone is now reaching out to both Amy and Rich, you know, Rodriguez, to, you know, how can we bring that to our school? So they're getting a lot of fanfare, Dr. Navarro, if you send us over. Also, Mrs. Franco and I attended the D LAC, and they have a special night that they do the Power of Personal Stories. They had two guest speakers that were our former students, you know, here in Newport Mesa, both at Estancia and Newport Harbor. And then they had parent, both the husband and wife came and, and spoke in Spanish. So Judy and I were at the other table where they were translating from Spanish to English, and, which was great. And I know enough to be dangerous. That's why I allow them to do that. But Andreas Varrakis, he was from Peru, and, and he wanted his message to his, to the parents there. And there's usually, I would say, probably fifty to sixty families there pretty continuously, every meeting. And he talked, he spoke about how important the, you know, his parents loved him. He shared about his story. But he was so lost, you know, being, you know, uprooted, coming here, meeting his family here. And at fourteen, he just, you know, not knowing our language a little bit, but not knowing it, great math science student, but not really being able to show that because of not being able to read or speak their language. But he really talked, impressed upon the parents how important their support was, you know. And, and he said that that was a common concern for his peers now, and, you know, that they don't interact. And, and he spoke of teachers that really were the ones that encouraged him. But he said, out of his whole career at high school, there was only one or two, you know, that reached out. But one of them encouraged him to go to Orange Coast College, and that he had the grades, and, and so he was doing better. And so he, you know, he spoke a lot about engineering and wanting to go to MIT, and he was so disappointed he didn't get into MIT. That was his, or Stanford. Those were his two choices. And he got into UCI and graduated with honors, and he is, you know, really grateful, because he's supported by his friends and families here versus, you know, going away to school. And he has a company, so, and, you know, and a foundation and a nonprofit that he's working on to support other students that may feel lost, you know, and, and need that encouragement or support. And the other young lady, who was a new mommy, she was there, married, both of these, our speakers are in their mid-twenty's, finished college and now have their own, you know, work. And it's, I want to say Elizabeth, but it's Orzabeth Cortez, and she's from Estancia. She, it was a little harder for me to understand her, but it sounds like the same type of story, because Andre was supporting her and, you know, and agreeing with some of her. But she's now owns a clinic and a foundation to support kids and mental health. And so she has all of her degrees and stuff. And the parents gave both of them a standing ovation.
Wow.
And, and had lots of questions. I think we were, we were there, you know, about a half an hour into questions. And they had really good, so I think, you know, something may come out of that, which will be, you know, out of that organization to help in the social, emotional, maybe, in an area that we may not understand, or kids have in, you know. So I'll be really curious. We did talk about Cambridge, and that it would be coming, I think, I can't remember if it was this time around, or anyway, it was brought up again, and they had a lot of questions about, is it for, just for teachers, or students, or parents? So they're just hearing, you know, probably the beginning of what that, you know, what that is. So they're anxious to get, a lot of concern. And then we had a parent couple, Rosa and Roberto Enriquez, and they, they came and spoke about their experience and why their kids were successful, because they were such great parents. And they both joked about that. But they were very supportive, but also letting them fall, you know, and, but it was, it was very powerful, you know. And the parents were, and everybody stayed. Usually, a little before it's eight o'clock, people like this room, I always want to know, what's on TV at eight o'clock on a Tuesday night? I always want to know what's on TV at eight o'clock on a Tuesday night, but everybody stayed, you know, and everybody stayed, and they had, you know, questions. We shook hands, and, you know, so it was, it was really nice. So I think we ought to include more of that. But kudos to the staff, you know, they had a really great program going, so.
Okay.
Nothing additional, because she did it all.
I noticed, yeah.
Sorry, I was very passionate about that.
Just enjoyable visit to the two schools.
Good.
Yes, I think that would, I'm going to harp on it again, but all our schools do phenomenal jobs, and our district does phenomenal jobs in the areas of the arts. So we really need to get together and promote a season package. You know, every single one of our middle schools, every single one of our high schools does a Broadway show, a musical. And normally, they're almost always virtually sold out. Virtually every seat is taken. Footloose, I think there was probably maybe ten seats, and we went, we went on, we went on a...
Wednesday afternoon.
Wednesday afternoon at four o'clock. So, and then we have these wonderful music festivals, the strings. I think that it'd be just so wonderful to be able to offer those to our community members and say, hey, this is what's going on, and come up with a season package. I just can't talk to that enough. A second is, again, Polerino and College Park. I'm assuming that, you know, my assumption is that every school is doing a phenomenal job. Gone are the days when you had your class list, and you looked at the students and you met them. And I only had twelve because I had twelve active boys because I had a special ed. But now it's color-coded, they know you're a student, they know exactly what they're doing, they're doing it by this, they know this, they're moving kids around. It's making sure that every student is getting what they need at that particular time. And so it's just absolutely phenomenal. A couple of other things is AB328, which is the late start. I would really like to have us consider having a study session about that. I know it's not going through. I know PTA has endorsed it. It may go, I'm not sure, right now it's dead, but they may be bringing it back, and this is only for middle and high school. CSBA has an opposed position on it for one specific. They don't believe in state mandates. They do not want it to be a state mandate. They do support LEAs adopting it, late start times, for LEAs to take a look at your particular, your particular, you know, school district. And so I would really like to have a study session to start taking a look and having a conversation. And the reason is it's a segue into, had the opportunity to participate and go to the National School Boards Association Annual Conference, which was held just recently in San Antonio, Texas. And primarily the reason I go to these conferences is because I get the national perspective, and I had an opportunity to listen to very well-known speakers in terms of education. Doug Reeves was there, Mr. Parrott was there. And Doug Reeves mentioned a new book called When, it's The Art of Timing. And even Daniel Pink is working on timing, and to the point where kids should have first to second period, they should have math, because that's the optimum time. And across the board, academically, GPAs rise across all curriculum areas. If you have math first and second period, GPAs are going to be between that. Also, don't make any decisions late in the afternoon, well, what we do.
Or eight o'clock.
An eight o'clock is not the optimal time to be making decisions. Just some fascinating opportunities. But one of the ones that was really struck home with me was I took a master class on, I've got to pull it out here, Bill Parrott. He's the director of Center for School Improvement from Boise State. And he was talking about poverty. And talking about it from the standpoint of, do we really understand poverty? Do our teachers know what it looks like? There's misconceptions out there, talking about the stereotypes. Well, kids in poverty, they can't achieve. Kids in poverty, parents aren't engaged. They don't care. They're not, all of those issues, and this was talking about breaking down those stereotypes, but also really developing and providing our teachers with exactly what does that look like. Fascinating, fascinating. And he also took it, and he's written a book about high-poverty schools and are now high-achieving schools. Kids where they were virtually hundred percent low income, and now they're in the highest performing in terms of the test scores and graduation rates. And one of the videos, and I really would encourage, I'm going to, I'm writing to him to ask him for it, it was a video that a young woman did, who, her name is Amanda Watson. She wrote, did a video, and she's sixteen years old, and it's titled After the Bell. And she starts the video and says, I'm not going to, these are my classmates at my school, so I'm not showing their names. I'm not going to tell you anything but. So the kids were not seen, but they held up a card. And the card said, "I found my father's body after the bell. This week, I don't think my parents have enough food, we don't have enough money to buy food. My dad's in jail. My mom's drunk all the time." All of these stories that are occurring after the bell that we really don't have a clue about. And this young woman who asked this question then showed the picture of herself and talked about herself. I just think it's really powerful that I think that we, he's an individual that I think we would benefit from hearing from and studying about poverty and what does that really, really look like, because kids are really good at hiding it. I'm commending the Assistance League for what they're doing at Back Bay with their program. So I just, just, you know, blown away, and again, and then we also had the opportunity, I went on Communications, and also when I took one on student board members and how to engage in them and taking a look at how we approach that. Because these school districts are all, you know, across the United States, and they're all different. But I particularly like to go to the ones that are having, that are equally as challenging as ours, and so it was great. So that's my report.
And I was at the National School Boards Convention, along with Mrs. Snell and Dr. It is a wonderful opportunity to talk to people from other states and hear what's different and what's the same. And, well, I know Mrs. Flora likes to go to schools that are about, districts that are about our size so that she can relate, but I don't look at that because I guess, sometimes smaller schools have really great ideas that we can take and nugget. And I, too, went to student board meetings, and they, two of the student, their student board members were at the presentation, and I asked, "When do you leave the meeting?" That was my big concern, because we talked about that. And their meetings started at seven, I love this, "And if they went as long as eight-thirty", and I'm going, wow, I want to go there. Sometimes they'd go home to do homework. So I went, oh, okay. But they had a lot of responsibilities other than that. I went to a safety presentation and was comforted in knowing that they were all excited about their SEMS participation. But what they did do that I see missing from ours is they worked together with their city, and it wasn't just their city, because this was in Illinois, and Illinois has a bunch of little townships all plunked together as opposed to the bigger conglomerations that we have. So their school district had three or four cities together. So it was, they worked with their cities, their sheriff department, the churches, and they were expanding to the libraries. So all of these worked together in their simulations to see who could pick, you know, if this was gone and that's what you practiced all the time, then where do you go? So it was, that was really good. And then I went, we went to several. I mean, there's four or five different ones each day, but the ones that stuck out to me, and I went to the legal ones, what are the new legal ramifications of things that are coming down the pike? And there was more discussion than I anticipated regarding students' First Amendment's rights. But I was very proud when so many other school districts across the country reported on how they handled or worried about their...
Student walkouts.
Student walkouts. And I was so proud that I could talk at our table, that we handled it perfectly. And students had the, students had the right to walk out, walk in, actually, they didn't leave campus, it was planned, and they could, students could run it, they could say what they wanted, or they didn't have to. If you didn't want to participate in that, you could stay in class, and teachers were teaching. And I think we did a great balance on that. And while I don't go every year to the national, because that's a lot of information all the time, and my parting prize from San Antonio was this cold, so that's really special.
I think you brought it with you.
Ah, no, no, just, I just brought my allergies, and they made it into a cold. But it is, it does bring things up, because then there's something that you didn't realize was on the radar. There's a planned walkout on April 20th, and I'm going, how come I don't know about that? I'm a vice president of the school board, and then it really, because April 20th is during our spring break. So you guys can walk out all you want, because you'll be home. So it's just a really great opportunity. But before I left, I attended the Newport Coast Class Act Bravo Family Night. And like you said, we are well-enmenced, we do a great job with the arts. But our partnership with the Pacific Symphony provides a full concert with a quintet of a family, instrumental family, for free at our participating schools. And the schools that I worked with are violinists, so I went to Newport Coast because they had woodwinds, and I wanted to hear Beethoven on bassoon. So, and that, it was just delightful. And they had a packed house, they had standing room only in their multipurpose room. And it always makes me laugh because, because the teachers and the parents that run the program are always so worried that nobody will show up. And they usually have people standing in the aisles. And then I was able to participate in the City of Costa Mesa Arts Focus Group, and I was glad to be able to represent the board on what do we think would be great, and for the city, and how they could partnership. And so I put in my two cents and quarters and half dollars, and gee, this would be great ifs. And so we'll see where it goes, because Costa Mesa is the city of the arts, so expand. Your turn.
Okay.
If I can take another cough drop.
It is wonderful to, I also attended the National Conference, and it is wonderful to have the opportunity to have professional development. We all need it, just like the teachers and administration. We need to find out what's going on, what our peers are doing, not only in California but across the country. So I went to several workshops, and there are literally twenty an hour. I mean, it's just overwhelming. Yeah. The ones I, really spoke to me were data, data, data. And it was about making data more understandable to the community, and by not just putting up a bunch of numbers, but, you know, having charts, color-coded charts, which we have some of that, but also reducing the data down so there's not so many measurements that it just, you know, you can't understand what's happening. So the fact that data tells a story, and you want to keep the story, how the story is depends on your audience. And so that was a really, they also talked about data talks, which we've had data talks with board members, but I think they, some of the people were doing data talks with the community at each school, and I think those would really be helpful to the parents, you know, just where they stand. And so that was one of my lightbulb ones that I liked. I also took one on mindfulness, social-emotional learning, and that was really, I talked about it with the other board members that were there. And it's not just about the student, it is about the student and their emotional, social-emotional learning, but it's also about the teachers, about the administrators, having time to process things and having time to ground themselves. And, you know, usually you go to these things, and it is all about the students, but it has to be about all of us, because how can you teach a student or incorporate in your lessons, social-emotional, if you're, you know, falling apart? Yeah. So that was very interesting. And the last, the other one I wanted is Rick Jeter, which Martha knows. He wrote a book called Dunk Tank, and it's about adult adversity, dealing with other adults. Mrs. Olson would probably, Ms. Olson would probably like to go to that one. And, see, his book is Dunk Tank, I think I'll buy that. And it's about the tactics that are used by other adults to bully other adults, and it was very interesting. So that was, those are the three that really spoke to me. I wanted to congratulate Jose De La Hara. He has a program called CMAT, Costa Mesa Aquatics. It's a club program type thing. It's a feeder program where kids from Costa Mesa can, well, anybody can go to it. And they have, they do races, they do their own, they have their own activities. And he, his group got an award for best, a national award, Best Multicultural Marketing Award from USA Swimming. So that's quite an honor, yeah, to get that. And I don't know if you were going to, were you going to talk about the daily pilot cut? Nope? Okay. Well, this was at one of my meetings, but I found out that gentleman Brett Woods from California School, he's been here before, and he is, I believe he's the one that's reached out for this, and so there's going to be a special education, several special education teams in the pilot cut.
Oh, that's cool.
I think that's just so awesome. So he's working with Candy Barella and to bring that up. So I was really happy to hear about that. Let me see. That's it? That's all I got?
And call for proposals. Congratulations, John, for the lovely article in the Ed Reports. But also, NSBA is calling for proposals for next year, June 1st. And I think we have several that would qualify. So I think that that would be something that, on the national scale, I think our textbook adoption would resonate across the nation.
And you could work on that on the weekends, too, right?
June 1st.
When you're not doing anything, sitting in your office alone.
Ms. Batoy, your light was on, is that just a mistake?
No, it was just to remind everyone that tomorrow night is the all-district, all-band concert at Costa Mesa High School at six... All-district, all-band concert at Costa Mesa High School in the Costa Mesa High School gym.
Yep.
And it's elementary through high school. It's a joyous noise. It's a joyous...
They're not having it in the theater. It's too big. It's too big, okay.
The theater's not big enough for the orchestras.
Yeah, yeah.
It's big enough, we could, that's why one of the suggestions we had was that Seeger Strums should let us have a concert hall once in a while, for nothing.
For nothing.
For nothing, yes, we threw that in, too.
That's a great idea. Carnegie does it for...
I mean, we could do it all day long and do vocal and violins, and, I mean, I, we were able to dream big because none of us had to supply the money.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Navarro.
Okay, just very quickly, because I've spent too much time already speaking tonight. I see Lynn here, just wanted to thank her, she's the one who set up our meeting on May 2nd. see Lynn here, just wanted to thank her, she's the one who set up our meeting on May second, where our team is gonna go and speak to all of their members about safety. It's gonna be a safety update, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Just wanted to let you know, we did get our meeting with the chief of police at Newport Beach confirmed. Oh, I'm sorry. Newport Beach confirmed, they are, he would like to consider going to five days a week or an ex, or expanding services somehow.
Oh, that would be great.
Which would be, you know, something then afterwards we might open up with the City of Costa Mesa, but Mrs. Yelcy is gonna be attending that with me, so we're excited about that. And then today I gave Dr. Jockum an assignment, which really is gonna hit Mr. Lee Sung, and that is to schedule a, a, or to come to an agreement with Challenge Success to work with the board. Developing board policies that will support the activities taking place in our high schools and our middle schools and elementary schools.
Great, excellent.
So that we are lowering the anxiety level and the affective filter of our students, so they can be well-rounded students and lower some of that pressure. So, she's gonna work with Mr. Lee Sung, since he's taking, since he's taking all safety matters under his wing, he's gonna be, have, have to be the one that comes, comes, brings that contract to you.
That's great. I like that.
Perfect.
Having that assistance. Ms. Olson?
Yes, I would like to share with you tonight. I want to publicly thank and acknowledge our credential team, Sarah Kincaid, Rachel Redman, and led by Kristin Gata. They're the backbone behind the Certified Certificate thing, and I know folks recognize the work they do in terms of screening applicants, the numerous, and helping people with their credentials, and, but there's so many other little pieces they do, and one of them is assignment monitoring, ensuring that our teachers are, that they have the appropriate credential in the appropriate class. And under the Williams Act, every year, there is an assignment monitoring specifically for the schools who had API one, two, or three in 2012. And so, we just went through that review and received a really nice letter from the county. They, Suzanne Fernandez really enjoys working with our team, because when she comes in, she knows she can count on the organization, the thoroughness that we give her information, and so she just appreciates that, and that builds a really good relationship for us with the county. But just to let you know that we did receive a hundred percent rating on our assignment for our Williams Act.
Wonderful.
So, thank you.
That is true. Yeah.
Well, the Facilities Department has been very busy getting ready for the summer, including by the end of this week, the request for proposals for a design builder, which will be our first experience with this delivery strategy for the Estancia High School Pool Aquatic Center will be completed, and so we'll be going out, we're really looking forward to receiving proposals from design builders and coming back in the early summer to get a contractor on board to get that project moving. The next one is to help the staff to keep up with things, there is an RFP that will be done by the end of next week to look for additional project management support to assist us with the many projects that we're working on, so it's busy.
Yes, yes, I wanted to ask a question. So, when you put these RFPs out, do they just go out and to everybody?
Scatter them with my flyer.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't really underst, I don't know how that works.
Actually, there's, there's, there's two, two aspects to that. One is the legal aspect, which is the public contract code requires us to advertise twice.
Okay.
It has specific advertising requirements, and we have to meet those. And the idea of that is to make sure that the broader community who might be interested in working with us sees it in a, a publication of record, so that taxpayers get the best value they can. In addition to that, though, many times what we do and the consultants who help us do is we will market it through groups of, of folks that we know are potential bidders, either specific contractors who are in that field, or through different organizations such as what's called the Green Room, which is a, an aggregation services for bids for contractors to be aware of different documents. And actually, the organization that manages our documents for us, handles the document publication process for us, often also is involved in the, a form of, of marketing, it's called PlanWell, they hold the plans, and then folks go there to, to download the plans and receive the plans. Am I saying that correctly, Mr. Marsh? Yes. So, there's actually a couple of different approaches we take to get lots of people interested.
Okay, thank you.
Friday night, I went to the 10th Annual Soy Fiesta at the Chuck Jones Center, and it was a great night, there was a ton of people there, they raised a lot of money for scholarships for our kids to go off to college. At that event, I presented them with a certificate of appreciation for 25 years of working with our students on your behalf, and they wanted, Mary and Caesar and the board wanted to make sure that I passed along their gratitude for your support and the facility that they're in, they're over the moon happy with the facility, and just wanted to tell you thank you for all of your support over the years, and they're looking forward to their continued partnership with you and our kids.
Great. Great. I was so sorry to miss that, that is such a...
They were aware where you were and that you were working, and they knew where you were, so.
So, some really good news. Last year, we knew that we were gonna go into this school year with adopting both an English Language Arts program and a mathematics program. And part of that process was working really closely with principals to design what the year should look like this year, strategies we can use to be successful, and one of the things that we heard loud and clear, yet it was more of a, a utopian theoretical idea, was wouldn't it be great to not have combination classes for teachers who are implementing two sets of curriculum?
Yes.
So, we were able to provide enough staffing this year to avoid combination classes. We only have one, but that was a, by choice, it wasn't because of staffing. And in the over, over 23 years I've been in the district, that was never the case. We always had combination classes. So, the piece of good news is that Jeff's department has been working very closely with schools, we're all going through our budgets for next year. Part of that picture is tentative staffing, and at this point, we look like we're going into another year of being able to avoid combination classes. So, I'm hoping to bring this good news every year, because at the end of the day, it makes a tremendous difference for a teacher who does not have to try to implement two curriculums at the same time. The only exception to this model is that we know in TK and kindergarten, there are some classes where we have those together, but those teachers are not implementing both bridges and wonders at the same time. So, just a wonderful piece of information, I, I think it's a huge celebration for this district, and we're hoping that that can continue for many more years to come, because we know that one curriculum is challenging enough.
Absolutely.
At any point, would it be possible to have that same thing happen in TK?
Actually, Kathleen, Jaquen, and John, and myself, we've been talking about exploring models of how other districts orchestrate their TK programs, and this is a year of exploring, as will next year be, but there are some unique things that districts have done to have standalone TKs, because everybody philosophically agrees that standalone TK would be ideal, and, you know, there are some options that we can look at to try to move in that direction. So, that's gonna be, that's something that we've had some discussions with this year, and moving into next year, Kathleen, Jaquen, and I, and John have been working pretty closely and thinking about what could happen, so we can bring more information to you as that becomes available.
Could you elaborate a little on the wonderful good news we got from the state?
Distinguished schools.
Yes.
Oh, yes. Both Sonora and Newport Coast Elementary have been identified as California Distinguished Schools, and that's a, that's a huge feather in both of their hats. I know also Newport Coast is going to be having a visit for their exemplary arts program as well, which will be on top of their California Distinguished Schools, so we can keep you posted with that. But congratulations to those two schools, it's, it's all based off of the new dashboards, and so we'd be happy to bring that information to you, as well as which, there are three ways you can qualify for California Distinguished Schools nowadays, and that's all based on the new dashboard system, so we'd be happy to share that with you in the future, as to what specifically did Sonora and Newport Coast do to be identified as California Distinguished Schools, but the hat goes off to those schools, outstanding.
Thank you.
And we have a new person here. Hi.
Hi. Good evening.
Welcome to this side.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to share a materials adoption update with you, starting with our six, eight math adoption process. It's absolutely winding down. We have been through both pilots, both illustrative math and agile minds in the classroom, and spent the entire day today with the entire committee, really looking at and calibrating the evidence that they gathered and documented throughout the process. And all I can tell you is the, the elevation of conversation and what they're talking about is far beyond any, any process, you know, that I've been affiliated with. So, they're on the right track in relation to analyzing alignment and the effectiveness of alignment and application, you know, of that in the classroom. I anticipate that we will come back to you, the first board meeting in May, with a recommendation and some teachers to share their experiences with that recommendation as well.
Great.
Some next steps, just so you know, for us between now and May first, is to employ Dr. Cox's experience in consensus, we will build that day together with a lot of help from him, and we're also gonna bring in Dr. Granger to help us with that process, she's got quite a bit of experience in that arena as well. So, we look forward to that day, and sharing all the information with them, and, and making sure everybody's voice is in the room, and that the will ultimately is elevated for a decision. And we'll come back to you with that information at the beginning of May. Two other quick updates as far as adoptions, we have kicked off our six, 12 History Social Studies adoption process. We've already spent two full days together building capacity and lens, the goal being that by the end of the year, they will have winnowed their material choices down to the two that they will pilot beginning next year, and then we'll build out the, who will be piloting at the beginning of next year, and provide then the training, and then go through the process again. And we're also laying the foundation for our high school math adoption process. And if you recall, they made a very smart decision from my perspective last year in, in stepping away from the process that they were intending to participate in this year to wait for middle school, because they're committing to really that idea and that vision of a K-12 math experience, and they wanna make sure that they're building off the experiences that they can anticipate kids will have with the materials and with the instruction that's happening kindergarten through eighth grade. So, that, that foundation's being, being set at this point, and I anticipate we'll be kicking off a process at the beginning of next year for high school.
Wow. Can I ask a question? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Flor.
Do you anticipate a similar process at the high school with the math adoption, given the fact that, are, are we still going with integrated math and that, that it should be equally as smooth? I mean, I just can't imagine.
Different personalities.
Oh, different personalities, different, you know, diff, because, because math is so segregated at the, at, you know, you've got algebra and geometry.
You're used to.
That we used to, but now it's all over.
So, what I will say to you is, when I say we're laying the foundation, those are all conversations that we are employing right now. You know, as you know, we are in the middle, and by the end of this week, we will have had all of our sixth through 10th grade students complete a performance task, from which we will look at that data and information in relation to where are our kids currently in relation to their ability to reason and communicate their reasoning mathematically. That'll give us a lot of good information in relation to, you know, any adjustments we may need to make in pathways and so forth to support, you know, new materials. As far as the, you know, specifics of what it will look like, I anticipate it'll look a bit different, but with the same premise of, you know, using the opportunity to, you know, build collective capacity and lens around, you know, learning about alignment and what that looks like in materials.
Okay, thank you. And we're back to Dr. Jockum again.
Yes. And this Thursday, April the 12th, at 9:30 in the morning, is our Community Advisory Committee presentation on social emotional learning and mindfulness and, and limit setting and all of those things, and we encourage anybody to come to that. And then we also have a second presentation in the evening on April the 26th, here in the boardroom from six to eight, with childcare available that night for anybody who it's easier to come to an evening meeting, so we're hoping for a good turnout.
Okay, thank you. Okay, looks like we're done.
Move for adjournment. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good night, everybody. Thanks.